Calling this meeting to order, Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Here.
De Penya.
Here.
Graziano.
Here.
Nattari.
Here.
Brevell.
Here.
Jumalo Burke. Mayor Melham.
Here. Sunshine Notice.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published in the Thursday, December 24th editions of the Bevel Times and Star Ledger. In an effort to prevent further spread of the COVID-19 pandemic, the public meetings have been changed to Zoom. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the Bevel Town Hall bulletin board, and copies are on file in the municipal clerk's office.
Pledge allegiance.
Aye, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so. We have a screen share. No, we had a screen share. Now we have Anthony.
All right, we don't want to see that.
You don't want to see that. What happened?
What are we doing here?
Hola. Why are we looking at the manager's face?
Yeah, that's all I see.
Anthony, you just screen shared.
Yeah, he hit a screen share.
Anthony, you're sharing your screen. Or your camera. Okay. We've banished them. So, as usual with the Zoom meetings, everybody, I'm going to just take it a little slow to make sure that we hit everything we have to hit, and I might be explaining and over explaining things, so forgive me in advance for that. I do see, or. About 24 people here. As you know, if you've been watching any of our meetings or been to our meetings, that if you've seen the agenda, at this portion of the meeting is when we go into executive session. So in a second, I'm going to ask a member of the council for a motion to go into executive session. While we are in executive session, absolutely no actions will be taken, no votes will be taken. This is just discussion. I like to always state the reason why we're going into executive session. And. So there's four reasons why we're going into executive session. We're going to discuss funding of property acquisition. We're going to discuss real estate services. Both of those are contractual, Clara Moss water bill, which would be potential litigation, and obviously personnel, which is clearly a matter of personnel. So for those reasons, I'm going to, in a second, ask a member of the council for a motion to go into executive session. At that time, traditionally, if we were face to face, we would clear the room and leave the room and the council chamber, just the mayor or council. But we're going to ask you to stay put, and then our administrator is going to bring the mayor, council, and any of our professionals out of this meeting into a private meeting for executive session. We're going to discuss four topics. It may take a few, I'm going to warn you on that one. And then we're going to come back in again. No actions will be taken while we're in executive session. You have nothing to do but just to stay here and wait. It's probably going to be a good 20, 30, 40 minutes with four topics on that agenda. Again, no action will be taken. So. Without further ado, I'm going to ask a member of the council for a motion to go into executive session to discuss those four topics.
Make a motion to go into private.
Second.
We have a motion made, and second to go into private. Call a favor.
Aye.
Aye.
So at this point, I'm going to have our administrator give every council person and member of the administration a link. You have to click that link. You should have it right now. Click that link to exit. Everybody else just stay put. We shall return. Thank you for your patience.
We're back, I think.
Okay, everybody, we are back. We have exited. I'm going to just give it a minute or so to let all council people and our professionals rejoin us. Everybody can hear me? Let's see some heads. Yes?
Yes.
I'm going to just remind everybody, please keep their phones on mute. Elected officials, please keep your phones on mute until your role is called. Administration, mute unless we really need you. I got two pages you can look at. Somebody help me out. Do we have all? Counting, so don't mind me if you're staring at me. I think we have everybody back, right? I'm a little orange. Okay, we're back. So. Just to reiterate, no, no action was taken while we were in executive session. We knew it was going to be a longer one. Apologies for that. We exited executive session with a motion to exit executive session. That brought us back here. We are now rejoined our agenda, item number five, which is combined conference regular meeting, which is discussions. We have two council meetings a month. The first council meeting every month is always a conference whereby we get to discuss certain items. Any council member, any member of the administration can put anything on the agenda to discuss. I will say this, this is a, it's a little awkward. This is a conversation amongst the council and our professionals. Unfortunately, we have this conversation in public, and I say unfortunately, the unfortunate part is at this moment, you cannot participate or speak. That's the only unfortunate part. The part that we are having it in public is a good thing. So you will hear, there were items listed on the agenda for conversations. You'll hear me and various council members deliberate and have conversation. You are ready, willing, and able to hear that conversation. If you do have a question about something, you will have a chance to speak on it. It will be during public commenting portion of the meeting to come later. So unfortunately, you are our guests. You cannot speak or participate at this moment. But if you do have a question, you have every right to answer that during public commenting in a little bit. So without further ado, we have some items on the agenda today. My discussions should all go pretty quick. Item number A, I had down, which is transportation of seniors. So I'm going to be giving during my mayor's report a COVID update, not going to do that right now. But there is something that we've been discussing among the council. We've asked the manager previously to talk about or to plan the ability to transport seniors. Unfortunately, our vaccination center is in Livingston. It's about 35 minutes away. I was there for the press conference. We have made appeals to the county to bring that closer, and actually, it looks like we are winning that appeal. I'll be talking about that in mayor's report. Long story short, I believe I spoke for the council when previously we asked the township manager to begin planning for that, when we get to that tier where our senior citizens can go for vaccinations if they so choose to allow our dial-a-ride or our senior transportation to do that. So we don't necessarily need a plan right now. I just wanted to reiterate that to the manager to just find out. Again, we don't need details or specifics. I just want to make sure that you hear from us and from him that there's going to be a plan in place. Mr. Manager, is that good?
Excellent, sir.
All right, so I'm going to assume that there's going to be a plan in place. That's all I have to say on that. When and if, when I should say, we get to the point where we could start vaccinating seniors, I'll have an update on that coming up. Item number two. Various neighborhood issues. So we've been going back and forth for several occasions now on different things. It's hard. A lot of people often talk about this form of government and how it is. It's very, very frustrating at times for somebody like me who's trying to get so much done, trying to accomplish so much, but we're kind of, we have to work within the compounds here of what the organization is. So one of the things that I've been discussing or trying to discuss with the manager's office and through his office to some various different departments is the fact that we need to focus on a lot of different neighborhood issues. A couple of the points that I had sent out last week are items. I've been seeing a lot. I know Councilman Deputy Mayor Graziano talks about this a lot. Commercial vehicles on property. I've been noticing even worse. I've been noticing cars on blocks in driveways. Absolutely terrible. I took some pictures of it last week. Also, Washington Avenue diagonal right here, Town Hall. There's a parking lot next to the little grocery store between that and Michael V's. There's a little, there's a little parking lot there. And again, I take a lot of pictures. I send them always to the manager. I don't know if you can see my screen, but. A really, really ugly fence has now been erected. Seems to be out of the blue. It was erected. And lastly, right actually where we are in Town Hall, the back end of that street, which is Granite Street, if you walk down that street, it's absolutely awful with cars on blocks, no license plates. The property maintenance issues are getting to the point where it's, the town is starting to look dirty. I think we did a great job for a while of keeping on everything. I know COVID. This council and this governing body even made a decision to, through the manager, to bring somebody in that could be kind of our eyes and ears on the road, almost like an inspector for property management. That person is not working actively, and I've asked the manager to try and get a replacement for that. But Mr. Manager, I'm just bringing this up to you again. You know, because we've communicated on this. It's not the first time you're hearing these issues. I emailed on Wednesday. Didn't get an answer from anybody in the departments here. I followed up myself on Friday, did not get any answer to that. You did answer me, but we have not had any satisfaction to that. I then sent another email on Monday. It's now six days. So I just get concerned where a member of the governing body or the mayor can send in some different requests like this, trying to work on behalf of the people and taxpayers. And if our needs, which are the taxpayers' needs, aren't being addressed, I feel the frustration of what a resident would go through trying to get some action. So, Mr. Manager, you're the only one that we can speak to in this form of government. I'm going to just implore you to try and get a handle on, maybe there's an email issue. Maybe emails are not being received. Maybe emails not being sent out, but I don't, as the mayor representing several different complaints in the neighborhood, six days without an acknowledgement or six days without any word. It's just, actually, it's insulting. But unfortunately, it's not necessarily you, but you're the only one that we can speak to. So I'm going to just ask that we can try and wrap our hands around this and try and get some better communication, just get some dialogue going. The other issue with regard to neighborhood issues, I saw a, I see Bobby from DPW somewhere on the phone. I saw a photograph in Silver Lake of a payphone covered and covered with graffiti. The owner of the property wants to cut the payphone out. I'm not quite sure. They've come to me, and that's the thing. You know, you have to understand, this is just not me complaining about everything. Everybody comes to me with emails and photos and messages and complaints to me, and it's frustrating to me when I'm the mayor and I can't necessarily get a complaint. I'm back in my previous comment, having nothing to do with Bobby and the payphone, but. You know, it's just, I've been, I've seen a lot of graffiti around. My mayor's report was going to be a question to the police chief on who handles graffiti, a ton of graffiti all throughout Silver Lake. I'm not sure if that's a police issue. I know sometimes they like to log that in. But again, I just think we need to reset some property maintenance, some of the inspections. I think we're slipping a little bit. I really, really do. So Bobby, if somebody, you or the manager can get me an answer as to who handles the payphone, it's, obviously, there's no phone there. It's just the, not the booth, but it's the metal stand covered with bumper stickers and graffiti. It looks absolutely awful. So if we can figure out who actually has to deal with that, I'd appreciate it. Last topic is redevelopment updates. For me, that is something that I think the council just witnessed or is going to be witnessing shortly, as we no longer have an item on the agenda that previously dealt with a redevelopment matter. You know, the way this works is that we have committees and sometimes subcommittees. So myself, I'm a de facto member of basically all of them. I attend most meetings. We do have a redevelopment team. Councilman Cazarelli is in on that. Deputy Mayor Graziano is in on that with our professionals. So myself, Councilman Cazarelli, Deputy Mayor, we have intimate knowledge of all the developments happening. And sometimes we negotiate these things, or our professionals negotiate for six, seven, eight, nine months. And it's often frustrating, and I voiced this before, that something comes before the council, and it's the first time they're seeing it. And it's not their fault. They deserve to get an update and to be briefed along the way. Obviously, they're not part of every meeting like the three Deputy Mayor and Councilman Cazarelli are. But they should be kept along, because if we're negotiating something for nine months and the council has no interest in moving forward on it, we're wasting everybody's time and sometimes our professionals' money. So with that being said, I did email Mr. Donatelli, our redevelopment council, who sits on our redevelopment meetings with us. He's very well organized. He puts together a great agenda for us monthly when we meet. And just so that maybe he could provide that update, that post-meeting update on where the bullet points are to every member of the council and at least the planning board chairman and vice chairman. This way, when we go into executive session, the manager can just nail through, you know, some of those points, either monthly or whatever, just to keep the council up to date, because often we go six, seven, eight months in a specific path. And yet, you know, the majority of the governing body, four of four of us, have never heard of anything before. So it's just a good communication thing that I think it works well, our people on our redevelopment team. But if Dean, and Dean has already acknowledged that he can do that, and then that'll help tee up Anthony so that when we're in executive session, since these are negotiations, he can just quickly rattle off some updates. If the council says, absolutely not, that's crazy, we don't want to entertain it, well, we're not, we're going to stop going down that path. Basically, that's how it's going to, that's my opinion on that. I know Deputy Mayor Graziano was interested in getting some updates too, out to the planning board, because we both sit on the planning board. So again, you know, the council is kind of in the dark sometimes until we vote on first reading. Then usually there's a month that you get up to date and before the public hearing, before the final, final vote. In the meantime, the members of the planning board are often hearing it for the first time too. So just trying to keep everybody in the loop, so there's a little more knowledge and acceptance as to what we're, what path that we're all going down, before we go down a path for seven, eight, nine months, and it's been way too late. So does that sound good to members of the governing body? Little update every once in a while, keep everybody on the same path. Yeah. But that's it for me. There's no other topics on. I'm the only one that put something on for conference. So without further ado, we're going to entertain the report of the manager. Mr. Manager?
Good evening, everybody, and first let me start off by wishing everybody a happy new year, our first meeting in January 2021. So let's hope that it's a healthy year, most important. Start off with, unfortunately, we still have to start off with just COVID in general. So. Good news, bad news in between. So we have and continue to offer free testing to all residents, town employees. Employees that work in, that may not necessarily live in Bevel, but that work in Bevel. Your waitstaff, your waiters, your waitress, your hairdressers, salespeople. So we have gone up and totally above what some other towns are doing, and we're offering testing every single week at no cost, and the lines have been minimal. So it's a great service that we are offering to our residents. We all know that when it comes to the fight against COVID, not only the social distance and wearing the mask is a key element, but we have to keep testing, and testing is important, because every time we test somebody that is asymptomatic, that's, we're eliminating and we quarantine that person, we're eliminating that one person from walking around and infecting others and causing harm. So the good news is that our testing continues weekly, and starting, actually, starting today, we're going to a six-day-a-week operation. You can go on our website. It's a real easy barcode scan, and testing is happening in the Chandelier parking lot. Again, this is at no cost to residents and employees, and if you take a look at the last, probably last month, we probably tested over 1,000 residents. And again, so it's good news. The unfortunate part is, the more you test, the more positives that you get. And if you take a look at some of the charts and some of the statistics, Bevel is considered a hotspot. That has more testing or more positives than others. But again, it goes with, the more you test, the more positive you're going to get. But that, but that is a good thing. This past. This past week, I had the opportunity to attend with the newly appointed OEM coordinator, Deputy Chief Corbo, Captain Bryner, who is the deputy coordinator, and Vince DeFlippo. We went over to the testing site in Livingston. Very well organized. It looks great. Clearly, the destination is a little bit of a hike to get to. So it brings up the concern that the mayor brought before. Residents that drive, sure, not a big problem to get to Livingston. But when you look at the senior citizens and people that don't have vehicles, getting to Livingston could be a challenge. I have been in contact with the county. I've attended one Zoom meeting, and there's another Zoom meeting scheduled for 1:30 tomorrow with the county transportation. They have assured us that they will be providing transportation for us to get seniors to Livingston. So we're not really, you know, again, I think the mayor pointed it out before, we're not really happy with Livingston. If we have to, and we will, we will continue, but we will, between the county transportation department and our our senior service that we provide to our seniors, we have two buses. We'll have both of them back in the line, working. We will have a plan in place as soon as we get the target date where the next phase. So between the county transportation, our own transportation, and hopefully some news in the near future that some of the testing sites that are doing police and fire will be able to do residents. So that's, it's a very important topic and something that we're paying very close attention to, and we will continue to do that. So that's, that's very important. And then the other thing I want to say is on December 16th, we had our first or last snowstorm of 2020. We had more snow on that one day than we did in the whole previous year. And it was the first snowstorm that Bobby Walter and Rocco Bosama worked as the superintendent and as assistant superintendent. They did a great job. The men and one woman did an excellent job as far as attacking that storm. We've got great compliments. The PD, FD, again, they were all part of the cleanup operation. So the good news is, we have, Bobby and Rocco have clearly have proven that we're in good hands this winter. And with every snowstorm comes costs. Just as a footnote, so you can appreciate it, we had nine inches, but we spent 12,000 in salt and we spent over 26,000 in overtime. So that's, you know, roughly $40,000 for a nine-inch storm. So hopefully, this is a mild winter, because at this point, we really can't afford too many other budget challenges. And, you know, we did start working on the 2021 budget, and, you know, there's going to be a challenge, and we're going to do our best, but hopefully, we get a mild snowstorm. So again, to all of the men and women in public works, we say thank you for doing a great job on December 16th. Police and fire as well, and certainly I'll be available during the course of the meeting for any question.
Council members, any questions, concerns for the manager?
No questions, Mayor, but I just want to emphasize what the manager said with Bobby, our DPW, our new chief in the DPW, he did a great job on the storm. It was a lot, it was his first storm, but it was a lot of guys, new guys that never had a storm like this, even that were hired last year and the year before, that never got a big storm like this where you're working 24, 36 hours, you know, in a clip. So I think all in all, you guys, you know, did a really good job. Also, to piggyback what he said about, I practice what I preach. We have the new COVID testing center today. I went myself. I got tested, 10 minutes, registered, test you, and you're out. It was real simple, right in Chandelier parking lot. So anyone could go. So do it.
Let us know your negative, please.
I will positively tell you that.
Anybody else for the manager about his report? No?
Good too.
Okay. So we're going to have a section when I'm done for committee reports, but we're probably going to cover most of it. So, all right, next item on the agenda is item number seven is the report of the mayor. I'm going to try and get through this fairly, fairly quickly. Couple of questions. One, I already talked about the neighborhood issues, but can I just get a confirmation from either the manager or our chief? Graffiti, is that something that the police department wants to know about first, or what are we doing for graffiti? I forget.
Mayor, in the past, we've always handled that as part of quality of life issues, but we are not solely responsible to handle such a thing, but we can. It's not a big deal. It makes it easy.
I have a hotspot area. There's a portion of Silver Lake, and there's also a portion of Washington Avenue. It's just covered. It looks like the same person.
I'll await your email.
I'm sorry?
I'll wait your email, and we'll take care of it.
Okay, perfect. So. Let's see, got that, got that. The question's done. That question's done. Did I hear correctly, Mr. Manager, in our last OEM call last week? Has Bevel made an official decision to cancel indoor sports?
No, I mean, right now, we're still following the state. We have, we're still considering some sort of winter program. The problem is, it's the age group, and the younger the children are, you can't allow parents into the, into the activity. So some of the older children will still be able to do like a basketball, bitty basketball, things of that nature. And for the younger ones, it may not work, but we, every day, we go back and forth. We monitor it. If we can offer a program, we will.
Okay, yeah, I just, okay, maybe I heard wrong in our last OEM call. Okay, so that was that. Okay, so I too want to commend our DPW and Bobby Walter. I was on the scene out and about during the storm. Did some drive-alongs with our police department, saw how they operated. Went actually down the DPW with the manager, and the manager was out most of the evening. And, you know, was in the yard, saw the operation, a lot, a lot of compliments on social media. Again, I tend to be receiver of all the complaints, but I also do get compliments on behalf of other departments at times. So Bobby did a great job, so thank you. It was nice for me to see the guys' work and the girl, from what I understand. And also, you know, just to say, while DPW is clearing the streets, our police are out there, and also, we bring in additional people for traffic. And why we do that is because we have special roads that are snow emergency streets, paths to the hospital. And I have to say, driving along with the police department like I did, those signs clearly say we can tow you, you know, if the road is snow covered. They go to great extremes not to tow vehicles. I think we only towed seven or nine. I was there with them. They run the plate. They hit the sirens. They ring doorbells. They try everything in their power to notify residents about the snow emergency streets. Again, we have a lot of new residents coming to town. They might not necessarily know about it. But again, DPW did a great job. I thought the police traffic people did a wonderful job. Again, just caring for our neighbor. I know our chief is anti-ticket. He thinks that's punitive, and I don't necessarily disagree with him on that. And towing your car is nothing worse than having your car towed during a snowstorm. So again, I commend both the DPW and our PD for that. First topic I want to mention real quick, I'm going to keep sounding this alarm, people. I've been saying it since November, December. Our 2021 budget, nobody flipped the switch January 1st and ended COVID. So everything we expected and got in 2020 is what we should anticipate in 2021, which means revenues. Our revenues are down. One department specifically, I got a report this week, we're down nearly 35% revenue, which means that if we budgeted it for the year before's revenue, the taxpayers have to make that up, which is why I've been adamant with the manager, making sure that this budget is going to come in on time, making sure that where the council's going to be with it. We did form a budget committee. I will say that to date, we have not, to date, we have not been, unless I have not been, but I don't believe we've been notified of any pending meetings. I'd like to get in to some meetings and figure out where we are with the budget. We are already now, basically, middle of January. At our last conversation, we had, I think the deputy mayor was in the room, Mr. Manager, and our CFO Judith was there. We had talked about that we were going to get presented with multiple options. I don't know if you remember that. A zero option, a 2% option, a raise option. Just, can you just follow up on the status of where that, where that, where those options are for us?
As far as yet, Judith and I will, you know, the budget process has started. And again, revenues, revenues are key. So obviously, that's one of our starting points. So we will have a draft budget ready to present to the committee, and that's the next step in the process.
Do we have a target for that?
I know Judith's on the call with us. I don't want, I know, obviously, we're in somewhat of a transition as well. Judith, could, obviously, you can hear us. If you want mute.
On mute.
Okay.
Hello?
Yeah, I hear you.
Hi, how are you? We have started working on the 2021 budget. We have everything, and I am formulating a template right now as we speak. So I mean, I'll talk to Anthony tomorrow, and then we'll have a target date for you, if that's okay with you, Anthony.
That's fine with me, and I'll make sure that we send it out to the mayor and council, so they'll know what our first target date of the first draft is.
Okay.
All right, that's my topic for the budget. COVID update. You heard the manager speak to this. We had been, on our OEM emails that we get internally here, we've been seeing heat maps, and the manager alluded to it before. That heat map had Bevel being the only municipality in Estes County that was red. Obviously, there's multiple ways to explain that. We've landed on the fact that we and the manager has worked extremely hard at providing Bevel's own testing. So we were testing 300, 400 people every single Monday. Obviously, those positive results then get reported. Obviously, then, our numbers tick up whereby the county was doing tests. Obviously those positive results then get reported. Obviously then our numbers tick up whereby the county was doing testing spread throughout for everybody else. So we were doing our own testing, we were red for weeks where even Newark was, was not even orange, but they were even yellow, which is two steps below us. Finally, as of yesterday, we came down off red, we are now, as of today, we're actually yellow. So we went from red bypassed orange right down to yellow, which is good, but we're going to, we're going to stay the course. We're going to keep testing, providing testing to our residents. That was that for COVID. I think the manager mentioned already that the county is willing to transport. That's a good update that we just got from him. I am also told that for homebound seniors, on my mayor's call this morning, for homebound seniors, the county will send somebody to you. A doctor, a physician's assistant, if you are a homebound senior that cannot leave your house for a test, the county will send somebody directly to your house. That was good. I, I have here in my notes that the manager is going to work on a plan to transport seniors. We kind of covered that one already. And lastly, it's a last minute addition. I did receive a call this afternoon from the county executive. And he informed me that they heard Bellev's request to potentially reconsider our location being Livingston, which is a 35 minute drive because I've made it for the vaccination center. And as of right now, he's told me that it's okay for Bellev residents to go to West Orange. It's a little closer, it's the West Orange Kmart, Bellev residents can go there. I then reappealed to him, thanking him for that. And then we both collectively said, well, let's also try and get Newark mentioned in that. So if anybody wants to go to either, I think it's university hospital or no, I'm sorry, it's Estes County College, which is in Newark. Wait for the official announcement from Bellev. The county is going to give us an answer next day or so on that. But the good news is we've gone from Livingston to West Orange and more than likely, if you do want to go to Newark in the next coming days or so, look out for the township to announce that. Moving down my list, sorry, I know it's, it's, it's going to be, we, we, we haven't been here in a while. You will, you will, you will read a communication in a few minutes from Vince, our health officer. Communication sent, it mentioned in our OEM meeting and then done submitted via writing about it's his opinion that Bellev should remain all zoom for right now. We have that opinion and we have that in writing. It's actually going to be communication on today's agenda. I do want to announce that our HIP program, H, HIP, Home Improvement Program. Again, I know some people like to complain about pilots and, and what their interpretation of them are. But with development also comes contributions to, from developers. Bellev has met our low income obligation, which means any developer building in Bellev does not need to provide low income housing, but they do give money to a fund so that people of a certain income level can fix their houses. Well, guess what? We have nearly $900,000 in a fund specifically for Bellev residents to fix their homes. Details on that program are on our website. We have approved contractors ready to go right now on our township website. You can apply for that right now. So it's open, $900,000 just for Bellev, just for Bellev residents. The program is on our website right now. Past events, holiday drive through, manager put a lot of time in on that. We did it in conjunction with the school district, great collaboration, always great working with them. And the manager and Dr. Tomko worked very hard on that. It was a good event, a lot of, a lot of people happy about that event. It went very well. Following up that event was our recently Three Kings Day. I, I just want to thank our employees that stepped up. We had a little confusion as to who was going to run that event. Last year it was done through the mayor's office recreation, I thought was going to do it, but it all came together. I just want to thank our employees who did a great job in about a week's time organizing a fantastic event. I do think that that event will be the standard. I do think going forward, even without COVID, we will do a drive through just like that. A lot of our employees stepped up and pitched, pitched in and wrapped gifts and did a lot of work. So I just want to thank them all for doing that. Upcoming events, we're winding down this Thursday, Essex County Food Distribution Event. It's this Thursday, the 14th at Estes County Branch Brook Park at the Cherry Blossom Welcome Center. Nine o'clock, first come, first served, 1,000 cars. The county will be there distributing food. Next Monday, it's on our website right now, it's on social media. Martin Luther King Flag Raising, not the first time we've done it, we've been doing them for a couple of years now. Martin Luther King Flag Raising, 10 a.m. We're not really advertising this as an event to show up. Obviously we're not going to turn anybody down if they do show up. But it's going to try and be socially distant as possible. We're also doing a call to service. We have some recommendations there. One of those recommendations, again, all this information on your website, one of those recommendations is to donate blood. And you have an excellent opportunity on July, I'm sorry, January 21st. Bellev is hosting a blood drive at the senior center. That can be one of your calls to service. So we would encourage you to look at that blood drive information, 21st of January at the senior center. Information is on the website. And last but not least, our great library has a lot of programs, a lot of Zoom stuff going on, a lot of virtual stuff going on. If you're bored, if you're home, make sure you check out the library webpage to see all the good things that our great library is offering. That's it for me for my mayor's report, going to move quickly into any committee reports. This is the first meeting in a month. We don't necessarily have formal committees at times besides our now budget committee. But any council member that's been involved in anything since the last meeting now would be your time to give an update or share anything on that. Anybody?
Hey Vin, you're going to do the green team or what?
No, you go ahead, Steve, all you, buddy.
Oh boy, I get to do this?
I was waiting for somebody to do it.
So I, I got a chance to go out with trustee Gabby Meany, the superintendent, Vinnie and a couple of other people. And definitely progress in the dog park, progress at, you know, in, in Camp Carigger also, you know, in Fairway. I mean, it's, it's great to see this kind of progress. And I appreciate what the green team has accomplished, especially Gabby in helping us get there. So.
It's been, I'll interrupt you just for one minute. And I'll wrap up the green team stuff. We got a couple more things in the works besides what Steve mentioned. There's a historic mural that we're in the process of planning and hopefully that'll be started in the spring. That'll be actually right down the street from the beautiful, welcome to Bellev mural. Again, all paid for with grant money. So we have that in the works. We have a few more parks projects that we're working on. That'll all be happening in the spring, cold weather, kind of putting a little bit of, of the brakes on some of those outdoor projects. But we're happy to get started again. When spring comes, we have some stuff for Earth Day coming up, some big events. So stay tuned for a little more information on that.
Thank you, Vin. So yeah, just to reiterate what Steve, Councilman Revel said, there's a lot going on. And a lot's going on is through grants, through donations and through hard work and effort. Bellev is seeing investments in our parks like we've never seen before. Whether that's Fairway Park, whether that's Community Gardens, whether that's the Pistol Range, whether that's Butterfly Gardens, whether that's dog parks now, we, we, we have, we have a lot going on. I mean, we really, really do have a lot going on and that's a testament to, to, you know, this council, the administration and our great volunteers. Because through COVID, we never hit the pause button. We, we always kept our, the pedal to the floor, moving forward, which, which is great to see. Anybody else? We heard from Councilman Revel, Councilman Cazarelli, any other council person have anything to interject, anything they've been involved in?
Nothing at this moment.
Okay. No? Okay. And I, obviously a lot of the stuff that Deputy Mayor Graziano could have spoken about, I already stole. Whether it's redevelopment stuff or there is some new wiring coming into town hall. So I know Deputy Mayor has been very involved in that project. Okay. So moving forward, any council member, we're good. I'm going to assume that we're good. Okay. So Kelly, we're going to move on to item number nine, which is the approval of minutes.
Not at this time. Next meeting I will have the mayor.
We're moving along, communications.
A letter of resignation received from Deputy Police Chief Gerard Corbo as a class two member of the Bellev Planning Board. B letter received from Mayor Milham appointing Jacqueline Guaman as a class two member of the Bellev.
Somebody's not muted. Make sure you're muted, everybody. Thanks.
Sorry about that.
C letter received from Mayor Milham to Ramondo Fontoro, Essex County Sheriff and Office of Emergency Management Coordinator, stating Deputy Fire Chief Martin Lutz has resigned as OEM Coordinator and is appointing Deputy, Deputy Police Chief Gerard Corbo as OEM Coordinator for the Township of Bellev for a term from January 1st, 2021 to December 34th, 2022. D letter received from Mayor Milham appointing Robert Cazarelli as a trustee to the Bellev Library Board to serve a five-year term. E letter received from Mayor Milham appointing Jeanie Lombardi as a trustee to the Bellev Library Board to fulfill the remainder of former trustee, panel Doherty's term. Said term begins immediately and remains until December 31st, 2022. F letter received from Lisa A. John Basta Esquire requesting the amended Roche redevelopment plan be removed from the agendas of the mayor and the planning board until further review.
Just so, just let me, let me jump in there one second, Kel. So anybody, anybody here on this Zoom? Ordinance number one for first, for first reading, that has been removed. So the ordinance pertaining to the Roche property, I think we call it 11 Franklin sometimes. That is no longer up for consideration or a vote of this council at the request of the developer's attorney. Get come.
G letter received from Township Manager Iacona to the New Jersey Department of Transportation, requesting that the property adjacent to Route 21 on Main Street be properly maintained. And H letter received from Vincent Di Filippo, Health Officer of the Township of Bellev, advising that public meetings should continue to be virtual due to the number of positive cases that continue to arise in the township.
Perfect, thank you. Next item on our agenda is item number 11, which is ordinance. As you just heard, the first ordinance that some people may have been interested in, which was the Roche Development or 11 Franklin or the residential development of, of that property has been withdrawn at the request of the developer's attorney. So that is not up for deliberation at this point. We're going to move on to ordinance number two.
Number two, ordinance of the mayor and council, the Township of Bellev, County of Estes, New Jersey, adopting the, adopting the 630 Washington Avenue redevelopment plan.
Make a motion for introduction.
Tag it.
Have a motion made in second for introduction, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
De Penya.
She's muted.
I'll come back. Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
He's muted.
Revel.
Yes.
Jumalo Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Milham.
Yes.
Councilwoman De Penya.
Yes.
And Councilman Notari.
Unmute, John.
He's still here?
He's here.
He's still muted?
John, if you're on your phone, it starts.
You there, John?
He's trying to talk because it goes to his screen. So it's because computer, the phone is picking him up that he's talking. But it's not coming through.
Something weird.
All right, we have everybody but Councilman Notari then?
Correct.
Just the first reading, so that's, I'm okay moving on while he figures that out.
Perfect.
Okay, ordinance number three.
An ordinance amending chapter three, police regulations of the codified ordinances, ordinances of the Township of Bellev.
Make a motion for introduction.
Second.
We have a motion made in second for introduction, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
De Penya.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari. Revel.
Yes.
Jumalo Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Milham.
Yes. I, I did hear Councilman Notari at the beginning of that.
Yeah.
Is he back yet? Okay, we have.
That's Marie.
That's Councilwoman Burke.
Yeah, that's me. My dog was barking like crazy.
Pets.
Okay, so we have six on that, Kel, right?
Correct.
It's just for introduction, so I'm, I'm going to assume that we're okay to move forward on that. We have section B, which is ordinances for public hearing, second and final reading.
Ordinance number one for public hearing and ordinance amending chapter nine of the codified ordinances of the Township of Bellev.
Make a motion open public hearing.
Tag it.
We have a motion made in second of the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So let's do it this way. I'm looking for my comments. Kelly, do we have any comments?
Yes. I do.
First thing we're going to do, just for the members of the general public, we have several comments emailed into the clerk prior to five o'clock. We're going to go with those first and I'll, I'll work the, I'll work the screens to see if anybody else has anything to say. Again, this is public commenting just for this particular ordinance. This is not participation which comes later. So any, we have a specific email, Kelly, on this particular ordinance.
Yes, I do. The first one I have is from Mario Drawz, 95 Bell Street, and he states, please explain.
So I'll let the manager take this. This is our, this is for second reading, this is our meters. So the township, in a nutshell, we had amend this a little bit because the township is now in the 21st century. And we have now parking the, the big, the bigger things.
Yes, we have pay stations.
Pay stations, thank you. We have two pay stations now in our public lots. Town Hall and across the street on Washington Avenue. And eventually we're going to have new meters, meter, meters, regular meters on Washington Avenue. And then we did, it also does include changing, I'll be honest with you, our, our rate was a nickel. And again, just something that had never been changed. I think it goes from a nickel to 25 cents. I get it. I'm going to get flack for a 500% increase. But I think a nickel to a quarter is, is probably below the, the most neighboring towns. Mr. Manager, is that a good summary of what this ordinance is?
Yeah, it's a good summary. It addresses the two public lots on Washington Avenue, one being adjacent right here to Town Hall, the other on the west side of Town Hall. And we do have, you know, we do have plans in 2021 to replace the old outdated meters with the meters that will accept
credit cards.
Apps, credit cards, all of the above.
Only first century. Kelly, is anybody else that wrote in for this one?
Yes, the next one is from Mr. Vincent Frantantoni. And he states, if I read this correctly, you will be placing individual meters adjacent to each parking space. If this is so, I agree. It is faster, more convenient and less confusing for shoppers than a multi-space pay station. While I do not like a 400% increase in parking fees, I will accept if you do the following. This extra cash be put into a separate fund and only be used for maintenance and policing, policing of the meters. As funds accumulate, we should be looking to purchase and create additional small off-street parking lots along Washington Avenue in the corridor. Not only will this be a convenience for shoppers, but will be a boon to businesses who lose customers due to lack of parking. And no, I am not suggesting creating a parking authority where the cash will only be used to create more patronage jobs. And thank you for extending the metered parking to the north end of Washington Avenue. See, when you do something good, I can praise you.
We're starting the year off very, very well. Okay. Yes, Mr. Frantantoni, you do read it correctly, individual meters on Washington Avenue. We are, if most of you might not know, our meters for some reason stop on Graylock Parkway and don't extend north to ShopRite area in there. So they are going to be extended once those individual meters come in. Of course, Mr. Frantantoni does cite the 400% increase. That's, he doesn't tell you we're going from a nickel to a quarter though. And it's, you know, it's a great idea, Mr. Frantantoni, about the extra cash. We've often talked about bids in different neighborhood areas to fund redevelopment. I'm not saying that all the extra cash should be put into a separate fund, but I have absolutely no problem if the manager wants to squirrel away a, a percentage of, of the increased revenue and reinvest that just on Washington Avenue. Again, we've done some great things on Washington Avenue. DPW walks it and cleans it when the weather, when the weather's good. We have the flower pots on Washington Avenue. We have some new developments coming in on Washington Avenue. We have some vacant storefronts that will be, lots happening on Washington Avenue, but if the manager so finds it, that he wants to take some of this revenue from meters, I think it's a great idea to take some of that money and reinvest it back into Washington Avenue. And I do thank you for a little bit of praise that we got. We're, we're going to, we're going to try and get used to it. Anybody else, Kel?
That's all.
All right, so that's it for the written comments. Do we have, I have two screens of faces that I'm looking at. So let's start with first, people that are on video. So let's start with first people that are on video. If you are on video and you have something to say just specifically about this particular ordinance, give me a hand raise. We've really, we've covered most things. I don't see anybody that's in person on video. Last but not least, anybody that's joining us via phone, if you have a comment about this particular ordinance, unmute yourself and give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, Michael Sheldon, forty-seven Floyd Street.
Okay.
One comment and one question. I'm very happy to see that parking meters are finally going to be extended north of Greylock to the Nutley border. It's a long time in coming. The question I had, are you planning to install the same meters that were presented about a year ago during one of the council work sessions? You had a company come in with a, a mock meter which showed that it would be capable of doing credit card swipes. It also had some surveillance technology. It was going to be able to have some video capabilities where license plates and local activity could be monitored. Are you still planning to go forward with those same meters? Or have you temporarily postponed that and you're still looking for equipment?
I, I do not, the manager could probably speak to it. I do not believe we're going with those. There were some issues.
The, the chief and I had, did a little more research. We, we are bringing in a newer model, but it's just basically for, to accept all types of currency. The, the one that you're referring to that we did consider for a while, but we didn't move forward, had some advertising capability as well as a camera capability. We moved off, we moved off of that one.
It's a different, different type of investment for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that was, we covered emails, we covered people on video and anybody that was on a phone call, Mr. Sheldon just went. Do we have anybody else on the phone that wants to be heard on this particular ordinance? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to entertain a motion to close public commenting and hearing and move for final adoption. Do we have a motion?
Motion to close and move for final.
Second.
We have a motion made and second to close public commenting and move for final adoption. Clerk caller roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
De Penya.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Jumalo Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
The ordinance is approved.
Next item, ordinance number two.
An ordinance creating part-time positions and adopting compensation plans.
Make a motion to open public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion made in second open public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the same, same thing, Madam Clerk, we're going to go with anybody writing in for this particular.
Yes, I have one from Mario Drawz ninety-five Bell Street, and he states, ordinance number two, explain, where is the list for the public to view?
So I'll take the ordinance for now. The ordinance is I'm looking at it now. It's not, it's not a change. It's creating. So this is going to be to create part-time positions for public safety telecommunicator. What does that mean? Why is the council making a decision to create more jobs? That's what we're going to hear. So here's what the answer is. This council, this governing body, this administration, I believe this police chief would much rather have police officers on the road patrolling our streets. We currently utilize police officers as dispatch instead, and you know, depending on their, their year, their rank, and their seniority, police officers don't come necessarily cheap as compared to a professional, what's called a telecommunicator, which is somebody who is licensed, goes to school, and has some kind of a degree or certification to actually be a dispatcher. It's a twenty, it's a twenty-five dollar an hour position. And hiring civilian professional licensed accredited dispatchers to actually work dispatch frees up a police officer to be on the road. Mr. Manager and/or Mr. Chief, did I get that right?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely, sir.
Good, good move for us. Obviously, somebody might say that we're creating another position, and I'm going to sit there and say we're putting another cop on the street. So it's a good, good move for us all around. As far as.
You did add mayor, there are part-time, no benefits. You did add that.
No benefits, absolutely. Twenty-five dollar minimum. And yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a good move for us. Puts a cop on the street. Nothing wrong with that. Okay, and as far as the public view, I think we're just waiting on iCompass to be up and running. When that comes, we'll have access to give the public view. Anybody else email in ordinance number two, Madam Clerk?
Yep.
Okay, so same as last time, I'm looking at videos. Anybody on video that has a question for this particular ordinance and this ordinance only, show yourself. I see nobody on video. Anybody on the phone, just unmute yourself.
Vic, Vic. Mr. Mafucci is waving.
My bad. I thought, I thought we swatting a fly.
You're on mute.
You're muted, Vic. Nope, you're muted again.
You're hitting the bun twice. There you go.
You're good.
All over.
I was just wondering how many hours a day these people would be covering.
I'm going to, I'm going to go on a limit, say the eight-hour shift, but I might be wrong, Mr. Chief.
Yes, ideally, that, that's what we would like to do. However, it is part-time. We will stagger hours where, when, when we're busy and not so busy. So that's yet to be determined. First thing we do is need to create the ordinance so then we could advertise for positions. Ideally, we would like the staff at twenty-four hours idea, but we'll start off small and take it from there.
All right, we're going to keep it to part-time. So it would be less than forty clearly.
Clearly, clearly.
Okay, all right. Thank you, everybody, for helping me out with that one. I'm still looking at pictures and videos. Don't see anybody waving. No. Okay, so anybody on the phone, feel free to unmute yourself and give us your name and address for the record if you have a comment on this particular. Hearing none, I'm going to make a motion to close public commenting and move for final adoption. Do I have a motion?
Close public and move for final.
Second.
We have a motion made and second to close public commenting and move for final adoption. Clerk caller roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
De Penya.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Jumalo Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
The ordinance is approved.
All right, moving along. We are now at the meeting called public commenting. I'm going to ask for a motion open public commenting.
Motion open public comment.
Second.
Motion made in second open public commenting. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
At this point, this is the portion of the meeting, for those of you who are new, where you can basically speak. Every single resident has five minutes to speak. We ask that you respect that time. So as to not take away from anybody else who might get tired. You do have five minutes to speak. We just need your name and address for the record. You can basically speak about anything that, that you want to speak about that you have heard or a question for today. Just like second readings for ordinances, we're going to keep the same exact order. So at this point, we're going to begin with anybody that sent emails into us, and we have a list. So Kelly, I assume you're going to go public commenting number one.
Yes, which is from Joan Schmidt sixty-one Hill Street. She states, the entrance road to Route twenty-one north on Main Street in Belleville is a disgrace. There's garbage thrown along both sides of the road. It looks like the dumps. I'm not sure who the, who the road belongs to, county, state, or Belleville, and should be cleaning it up, but I do think it's our responsibility to find out. It doesn't help Belleville's image. Hope you find out and have it cleaned up.
Thank you for that, Ms. Schmidt. That is the state. I believe the manager has already written a letter. That was on our agenda today's communication. On top of that, him and/or I have access to Meredith Anthony, who would be our, our contact, liaison with DOT. We've utilized her to get on maintenance issues. It's not our DPW. I wish it was, so we can just get on them to, to clean it up. I will add one more thing. Obviously, I've been talking about neighborhood issues all day. Anthony, if you could just add, I did get some photographs and some complaints on the Norc reservoir. Don't ask me how, but people are throwing bags of garbage over the fence. So if you're on Drolam Street, you can clearly see white bags of garbage. Maybe it's a lot easier just to have DPW sneak in there and grab them than try and go through the proper channels with Norc. Good. We looked like good that. Okay, Ms. Schmidt is now done. Next, next comment.
It's from Mario Drawz ninety-five Bell Street. He states, letter to Ramondo Fontura, is this a mayor's appointment or entire council or manager? If mayor, if mayor provides me with this statute under the Faulkner Act, I do not see it.
So let, yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm going to just do them as we can if, if.
Perfect.
So yes, letter Ramondo Fontura, as mayor, I have the authority, and only I have the authority to appoint OEM coordinators. I'm not going to necessarily do your homework for you, Mr. Dros, because you probably wouldn't accept it anyway. Just do me a favor. Anybody can Google NJ OEM coordinator appointments, and you will see the state statute that clearly says it is the mayor's appointment of OEM coordinator.
Okay. What is resolution number thirteen?
I'll let the manager say that. Some kind of paperwork formality with developer, which I might add is a holdover. The project was originally approved many, many years ago. I'm assuming that our engineer has to submit some kind of paperwork. How specific?
That's, that's, that's all it is, a formality to, to the Department of Environmental Protection that we have to sign off on. And I could certainly get him a copy of it.
Okay. Anything else?
In regards to all the pilot programs, which are more than a thousand units, he believes, how many are affordable units?
So I believe you are wrong. It's not a thousand units. I don't think we're anywhere close to a thousand units for pilots. At least not since I've been here, it hasn't been a thousand. Keep in mind, before Michael Melham was mayor, there were pilots that were issued by the township. And there's not been a thousand units. There's not a thousand units. Affordable units, Mr. Dros, you probably do know this already, but Belleville has already met our COA obligation. Therefore, there is no requirement these developers to provide affordable units. What they do, though, is they fund our GREAT program, which I talked about earlier, that currently has nine hundred thousand dollars in it for lower-income residents to fix their houses. So again, great things when the property is developed. Oftentimes, there's contaminated property that nobody wants to touch, that gets remediated. And when it's contaminated, the empty land is not worth anything to us tax-wise. But when a developer actually is incentivized, he cleans up the land, removes environmental contamination, builds to NJDEP standard, and actually gives us a ratable to help offset or begin to offset taxes. And if there is any kind of an obligation, they put money into a fund. That fund has nine hundred thousand dollars in it for Belleville residents and only for Belleville residents. That's that. Next.
What is so difficult to post the entire gender online? So much for transparency.
A lot of transparency here, more than ever in the history of Belleville. Thanks to my council colleagues, we live stream our meetings even before there was a COVID issue. Agendas are posted on Friday. Agendas are updated every time there's an update. We did invest in software. I saw an email today that actually our clerk was having difficulty with the software. So I'm assuming that once the software is working correctly, and we have our hands around exactly how to make, a lot of times, it's just not so simple. The council is privy to information that necessarily the public cannot see. Making two sets and separating that for public view is not easy. I'm sure there's a learning curve, and I'm sure the clerk is on it. Next.
Still waiting for my answers from the last town meeting in reference to resolutions thirteen through twenty-one, hiring attorneys.
You probably weren't paying attention at the last meeting because I answered this question pretty thoroughly, as I did last year when the same exact questions came up. We often put out RFPs, RFQs to retain council. There were no dollar amounts with that because we're not hiring anybody. There were no dollar amounts because we're not paying anybody. We're literally just qualifying attorneys to use in the future if we need to for either redevelopment, for negotiations, for labor contracts, for labor disciplinary issues. Anytime we need attorneys, they're yearly contracts. Every single year, every single council does this. Nothing here, no dollar amount because we're not paying any of them until we actually have to use them. When, I see the next one is when they were advertised. I don't know. The manager maybe might know offhand. I know it was public because we got a lot of responses and so many responses that we actually voted to qualify them. So oh, where they were advertised, I'm not sure if it was just online or in the legal paper. Maybe the manager knows offhand.
Kelly, can you respond to that?
They were published online, and I believe, I don't know the exact date, but beginning of December.
Yeah, and I think they're also on the website too.
Or November, or the end of November, November, December. I don't have the correct date, but I will get it.
Okay, next.
In the past three years, has anyone from the governing body received any contributions or legal services from any other firms? This question was not answered.
I thought I did, so I have no problem answering that question. I don't have a list of the firms. I receive contributions from a bunch of different vendors, including law firms. The nice part about contributions is that the state of New Jersey allows you to take contributions. We do follow New Jersey ELECT. Actually, it's an acronym, ELECT for Electoral Enforcement Commission. And when we do get a contribution from any vendor, we take that contribution, we itemize it, we photocopy it, we list the amount that was given to us, and then we actually upload it to a website for the whole world to see. So it's not hard to find out contributions. I've been in office for almost three years. I campaigned for a year before that. I have a lot of contributions out there. Feel free to go to NJELECT, search my name, and you'll be able to find those. The nice part about that is when the state allows you to do that, and they provide you a very nice website to upload all the documents. The whole world can see it. Obviously, it does not disqualify any vendor at all if they give any member of the governing body a contribution. Okay, next.
Last year, I questioned why the mayor's company, Alpha Dog, is running the township website. My Oprah was denied, and I filed a complaint with the GRC. Three of us were on a call with the GRC, I think, last May. One was your town attorney. I was told I could not discuss this with anyone until July first, two thousand and twenty. During the conversation, I asked, does the mayor, Alpha Dog, have a contract with the town? Is there any agreement with the mayor or Alpha Dog? I was told no. How is it possible that this town website run by the mayor's company is not a conflict? I noticed that Alpha Dog is listed on the bottom of some videos. Who owns the rights to the posted videos? Tell me why this takeover of the town website is legal without council approval or a contract in writing. I would like to see the council pass a resolution this evening condemning the January sixth, two thousand and twenty-one insurrection and terrorist acts at the Capitol in Washington. Copy of this should be sent to Senator Menendez and Booker.
So with regard to the website, again, talk about when you have nothing positive to say. So for those of you who are new, the township, this governing body, I'm sorry, this, this township used to spend on average of sixteen, eighteen thousand dollars per year. So if I'm going to be in office for four years, eighteen thousand dollars times four will be thirty-two, will be sixty-four thousand dollars a year. I have saved the taxpayers because my private company, company that I own, I am in the municipal website space. I work in about twenty-five different governments. I have a staff, I have overhead, I have payroll, I have a lot of expenses, and I donate every single bit of it, including my employees' time, to manage the website for absolutely free. So if Mr. Dros would like to go back to the old website, which I think everybody remembers what that looked like, and spend sixty-four thousand dollars for that, oh, I guess the government body could probably vote to do that. It would be absurd, since we have a very nice website now with information for everybody to see. It's done a hundred percent for free. The reason why my company's name is on some of the videos is because my company has a professional account. That might be Vimeo, where we pay a lot of money for, my company pays, Township of Belleville does not pay, and anytime video on behalf of any of our clients, our name is there because it's our account. That's it. I'm donating my time. I'm donating my company's time. I don't touch the website. I don't edit the website. I don't update the website. I have staff that, that works with the manager's office and works with every single department head in Town Hall. They provide information content to my staff, most of which is, I don't even see them, and they update the website and social media. I do not touch the website or social media. But again, it's a hundred percent free of charge. You, you don't hear Mr. Dros talking about the sixty-four thousand dollar savings because that's, we were paying eighteen thousand dollars a year for a subpar website, if you ask me. Now you're paying nothing for that service. Again, it costs me money because I have six employees on staff, a programmer, it doesn't come cheap. A front-end programmer, it doesn't come cheap, bilingual content person, and a web designer and a graphic designer, all on staff, and I donate all of their time and all of their services to the township. Again, it's just difficult for Mario, I guess. Anything else?
Yes, next one is from William, William Milden. He's from sixteen Hunkel Street. He says, why were people from the town allowed to ring in the New Year celebrating on video with no masks and not practicing? with no masks and not practicing social distancing while the citizens are not allowed to attend council meetings in person? And we have been informed by Dr. Tomco that the AG's office is not moving forward with the previous bill, EOE investigation. But we are even without your resolution to assist us. With all the evidence brought to the attention of the incompetent AG's office, they refuse to investigate those certain criminal matters mentioned in the twenty three page state audit compiled by Steve Els, who thought they should have at least had the courtesy to get back to him. Maybe the reason why you close these meetings is because you never know who may show up. Thanks.
So we close the meetings because our health officer gave us an opinion and almost a directive saying that we have. Uh, that's the reason why, uh, employees, the employees in this building, um, work together every single day. And again, I don't expect you, uh, to compliment, uh, our employees or our staff or our manager. Bellevue is one of the only towns, uh, around that kept the doors open all through COVID. Uh, so these employees have been in close proximity daily to each other. Uh, and I don't expect the compliment and I don't expect a pack on the back for me, this administration or our manager for keeping the doors open. But these employees work hard, they kept the doors open during COVID, they worked together every single day. Their, their temperature is taken every single day, they are tested, they are antibody tested. And for several minutes, they decided to do something really nice, which was to ring in the new year and put a, an exclamation point on the end of twenty twenty. And, uh, a few people unfortunately couldn't get the pleasure out of that and just had to be negative. And talking about the social distancing and the masks, which if you look closely, most masks were around their wrists because, or around their, their, their necks because they just dropped them for a split second. Uh, it's, these employees work in close proximity to each other every single day. Uh, they have familiarity with each other, uh, they felt safe enough to do it, they want to do it for our residents and I actually commended them for doing that. Lastly, uh, I think you answered your own question. You, you literally said that Dr. Tomco said the AG's office is not moving forward, uh, with the investigation. Uh, I'm not quite sure what else you want. Uh, obviously you disagree with that. Uh, which is why then you called him incompetent. But, uh, if the AG's office does not find that there's anything to move forward criminally, I'm not quite sure. I mean, you can certainly continue your, your fight for that, but, uh, I'm not sure what you want us to do about that. Anybody else?
Yes, next one I have is from Vincent Frantantoni, one twenty nine Mount Prospect Avenue. He states, one, the proposed plan for five hundred and fifty residential units or any amount on the Roach property, eleven Franklin, should be deep six immediately.
That's an easy one, Mr. Frantantoni, it's not up for vote tonight.
And number two, our annual township calendar continues to be used as a camp, campaign flyer at taxpayers' expense. Every month is filled with photos of the mayor and council, disgusting if not illegal. Our prior calendars had import, had important info on every page, such as what's, what items to recycle, where and how to get licenses and fire safety tips, hazardous waste collections and recreation activities, et cetera. And now with no shame, you are using our tax dollars for your campaigning. And shame on you four who have been sitting there nearly two decades doing nothing.
So again, uh, same old thing, we heard the same exact thing last year when the calendar came out. Uh, this council, uh, this administration is proud of the events that we do. We're doing a heck of a lot more events, we're, we're building a, a great sense of a community here. Uh, we are the elected officials, we are at these events and when photos are taken, most of the time we're in them. Uh, so when we take, uh, those photos, those photos are themed to the month. Uh, so if we're having a Martin Luther King Day flag raising or we're having a Black History Month in February, uh, those photos pertain to that. I, I don't see the harm in that. I don't see why that's a bad thing to celebrate, uh, the events that we do. Uh, I do recall the in, the great information that Mr. Frantantoni alludes to. The difference is this, I've actually read that information. It was horrible, it was all wrong, it made no sense. And when we asked the department heads to update it, uh, most of them said to us that it's useless information anyway. Uh, and by the way, some of that information is available on our website if you do need it. Uh, for instance, when you talk about the, how to apply for a raffle license, it said that the mayor had to make an application to the clerk, that's not true. Uh, a lot of that information was just nonsensical that was in there, it was basically filler. Instead, we're actually celebrating, uh, our different heritages. Uh, we're celebrating our multiculturalism with our flag raisings and we're showing people that, uh, if you see a date that says Peruvian flag raising or you see a date that says Columbus Day Parade, uh, it's just not a date. It's a, it's a sense of community and that we're all there taking nice pictures. Uh, and it's a good, it's a positive thing. Uh, I believe you're probably in the minority, Mr. Frantantoni, in your opinion. Anybody else?
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. These are communications there. Okay, so that is.
Make a motion to.
No, 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 that's, that's the ones that were.
Just gotta look at all the people out there, man.
Jumping the gun there, jumping the gun. Uh, okay, so, uh, we, we always do it in the same order. We went through anyone that emailed in. Now I'm looking at faces. Let's start with people on video. I do see Ms. Fleishman. So Ms.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Just, you already unmuted? I'm just gonna ask you to state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Carmella Fleishman, eight thirty three Main Street, Bellevue, New Jersey. First of all, happy new year to all. Uh, hopefully we can have a better twenty twenty one than we had rotten twenty twenty. Um, couple of things on my mind tonight. First of all, uh, the Route twenty one Main Street, it really does need to be cleaned up. Uh, I know, I was never sure if that was a state road, a county road or a Belvedere. I wish it was a Belvedere because like you said, Mr. Mayor, you'd have, you know, DPW doing a, a great job as they always do. Um, you know, it has gotten better. I've noticed the little things have gotten better because obviously we take that road every day. Um, but it does need to be worked on and I know you're working towards that. That's excellent. Uh, and again, to the workers of DPW, they did a excellent job with the snow removal of the, you know, of the streets, did a hell of a lot better than West Orange did where I work. Oof, um, I just, just a general comment, I just hope everyone this year and in years future can cut down on the snarkiness that I seem to get from unfortunately, sometimes the council people, sometimes the people that are, you know, speaking in, with their frustrations. I think everyone has had it with this, with COVID, with the restrictions, with the Zoom meetings, with everything. Everybody wants to get back to normal, quote unquote, normal. So maybe this year we can all take a deep breath. Little less on the snarkiness and the, you know, the, pardon my French, the bitchiness, there is no other word to say. Um, because in the end, we all do have to work together. And I think the council and the people do want to make a better Bellevue. And again, I understand business is a good thing, residential, nah, is enough in my opinion. Uh, so hopefully we can all work together and make Bellevue a truly beautiful town that it is. You guys have made some great strides and continue on with that. And like I said, hopefully we can all get back together sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you. I can't say I disagree with you. Thank you for your comments. Uh, I'm looking at. Looking for hands here, anybody on video? Is that a hand, Mr. Rodriguez? Or are you just resting? Okay, yeah, all right. So unmute yourself, need a name and address for the record.
How you doing? I'm sorry, I, how you doing? Uh, my name is one seventy nine Cedar Hill Bellevue, uh, Cedar Hill Avenue, obviously in Bellevue, right? First things first, uh, Councilman Cazarelli, I'm gonna thank you every month until that dog park is built. Uh, me and my dog are super excited for it. Uh, but I want to thank you for the Three Kings Day celebration. My daughters loved it. I just, I, I don't get to thank you guys when you guys do stuff like that. I do, I do want to echo, I know what you said about the health department, but it's a bad look if the BOE is doing the, uh, meetings in person. And, um, I, I really hope by maybe by February, we could get this figured out. I know what's going on, but it really would be cool if we could be in person. Um, one thing about transparency is when you do have the Zoom meetings, all the councilmen should be on video because we don't know if there's actually a councilman there or they just dialed in and threw their phone in the, in a glove box, right? Uh, that being said, I want to reiterate what I said last month, which I really wish we get the food truck park up and running again, maybe two trucks tonight. It would be good to have that option driving home from work, to have another two places to go to eat in town, and I think it could bring money to the town. Um, even if it's a hundred and fifty bucks a week, that's not a little bit of money. Um, and then I just, I want to ask if the police chief is on the call.
Yeah, he is, he's here.
All right, I want to say that, um, I, I mean, I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but I saw a video last month of, uh, an arrest, a DUI arrest. And I just want to commend the police officers because of the way they were verbally abused on this video I saw of the DUI arrest. Um, it happened over on Droloman Avenue. But the police officers were verbally abused for about a half an hour on this video. And not once did they retaliate, not once did they lose their cool. And I just want to say that I think we have some of the best, uh, police officers in Essex County, actually tonight. Uh, my neighbor had a dog loose and there was a cop that just stopped and tried to catch this dog and help us out. He was in my backyard when I got home chasing two, two of my neighbor's dogs. So I want to give a big shout out to, to the chief, police, uh, police chief, Minakini, if you're here. Thank God for you and your offices in, uh, Bellevue. And again, you know, I've been here the last couple of months talking about the rec center and I know there was a question about, um, when are we gonna get back to indoor sports? We really need the rec center right now. And with schools being closed and that, you know, I know twenty minutes a day and gym class doesn't seem like a lot of activity for our children. But right now our children in Bellevue have zero activity. And even if we can figure out something, um, track, anything that could be done outside, I know it's cold, but we could still do things like maybe, uh, you know, getting kids excited and start early, uh, early registration for softball, getting kids outside to exercise or do something. Because with the lack of schooling that we have right now and with us not going back to school, and I know they say we're going back next week, but they're, they're, they sit the whole day. So, um, I really look for the, uh, rec center to start ramping up things and start sending out emails and start posting on Facebook again. So we could get people excited about the rec center because you're gonna need coaches. It's all gonna come really fast and you know how I feel about the rec center with the, uh, you know, I was really impressed last month. I think I told you when you said, uh, uh, a better rec is better than a free rec. I'm sorry, I'm looking at my whiteboard notes. But that's really it. Uh, dog park, awesome food truck, please get it back, great cops, uh, thank you for Three Kings Day. Um, hopefully we can meet in person and let's just get this rec center back and go and everybody is COVID tired. And I mean, I, I think, I think we've been doing a great job, the town did a great job for all the COVID and, uh, you know. Thank you very much. I appreciate everything you guys done. That's really all I want to say about that and I hope you all have a great night.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much for your comments. Okay, so we're still, okay, see Mr. Mafucci, right in front of me. Go ahead, Vic.
Victor Mafucci, sixty one Continental Avenue. Uh, a couple of things. I agree, DPW did a great job cleaning the snow. Uh, the drive through was spectacular. Congratulations to everyone who was involved. And the last thing, I understand there is a lawsuit against the police and the town. And I wouldn't care how much you spend on legal fees, don't settle. Thank you.
Thank you. Much appreciated, actually. Thank you. Okay, we're still looking at, uh, we're on videos right now, so if you're on video and you want to speak, just give me a wave. I think we're all done with the people on video. So we're gonna move to our final, uh, segment of the population here, which is those of you who are on phone or not on video. Uh, just kindly unmute yourself and, uh, give me your name and address for the record and take your five minutes. Do we have anybody?
Yes, Michael Sheldon, forty seven Floyd Street. I, a few things this evening. Firstly, I'm, I'm, I'm still very concerned about the council's continued usage of Zoom, uh, video for its meetings. As you know, the Board of Ed has been conducting in-person meetings since October, uh, in full compliance with State Health Department regulations and Governor Murphy's executive orders. Under those guidelines, the high school auditorium can safely accommodate a hundred, up to a hundred and fifty people. You continue to cite that, um, a health director who's part of a shared services agreement with our township, Mr. DeFlippiio, um, is arguing against having a resumption of in-person meetings.
Well, he, he actually put that in writing and submitted.
Oh, it's all right, it's in writing, but nevertheless, you know, he, he's part of a shared services agreement. I assume that half of his salary is coming from Bellevue or some, some reasonable percentage of it is coming from Bellevue, which means he's, he is to a large degree a township employee who is, uh, kind of self-serving. He's, he's allowing you to, uh, continue these Zoom meetings. I, 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 I think it's appropriate at this point to contact the DCA um, and, uh, ask them to weigh in on this matter because as you know, back in, uh, December, they ordered Bellevue and all the other municipalities to accommodate in-person meetings, to do whatever was necessary to have in-person meetings. I think it's time to have them, uh, say something about what's going on with this. Uh, next item, I was hoping for an update on iCompass. You mentioned it a couple of times this meeting. Uh, the iCompass system, the portal, civic web portal, uh, was, uh, created back in September. Apparently the council's been using iCompass. I'm hoping that very soon, at long last, the public is free to use it, that you properly advertise it. I only know of it because of my, my prolific internet sleuthing, if you will. Um, but, uh, you, you, you can get the packet, the agenda packets on iCompass. So I, I, I just, I'm hoping that, uh, before we get too deep into twenty twenty one, the, uh, the iCompass system is fully activated so we can all see full statements of resolutions, ordinances, et cetera, bills list, what have you. Next thing I want to mention is, uh, another curious thing about the township website. You know, Mr. Melling, you said a moment ago that you don't have any direct involvement with the township website, even though your company does. And you indicated that, uh, Mr. Iacono, uh, tells your company what to change on the website. So you go back to Mr. Natari's biography page on the township website as of November twenty second. It still had statements about him having a PhD in English from Rutgers University. As you're very well aware, for months now, I have been publicly questioning whether in fact he actually ever earned a doctorate from Rutgers. The registrar's office said he attended, never received a degree. There's no dissertation on file for him anywhere. The Clifton Board of Education has always employed him, paid him as a master's degree. The State Department of Education only has him with, uh, master's level certifications. So after you running blockage, uh, in this matter for many months last year, at long last, you finally stripped all the PhD references from him off the township website and demoted him from doctor to mister as of December twenty second. Those changes have been made. Now, uh, this week, um, as I work with various newspaper, media, interest and prosecutors, now that, now that the township website has the no, nothing at all for Mr. Natari. Now, I, I really, I hate to see any council members' public record expunged. But it looks like, uh, this has happened with Mr. Natari. And Mr. Natari is again online here. Are you finally going to, to tell us if in fact you ever did get a doctorate? And if so, what is the title of your dissertation?
Mr. Sheldon, you're well aware of how this works. I believe you sat on a board previously, uh, that was the Board of Education. You do know that you have to address the chair and then it's up to me to.
All right, well, through the chair, through the chair, since your, your company affected the changes for Mr. Natari. Can we finally have a definitive word tonight? Mr. Is, is Mr. Natari, did Mr. Natari ever get a doctorate as he's been asserting since two thousand two, as he has claimed on all his campaign literature from two thousand four through two thousand twenty? And by the way, Title eighteen, which is the New Jersey statutes for education law, it is illegal to represent yourself with a degree you don't have. In fact, it car, each instance carries a one thousand dollar civil penalty. So the question ultimately is gonna be, does each single, single instance of Mr. Natari's campaign literature count as an instance? Or do you multiply by the thousand or more copies he sent out to households?
Your five minutes is up and I thank you for your comments.
And I won't get an answer. I'm not gonna get an answer again, will I?
I will say that as far as the questions that, that I can answer, you, you again were wrong, as you usually are, your false assumptions. I did not change the website. I did not.
I didn't say you did. I said your company did. Your company did. I made it very clear. I said your company changed. Do I acknowledge that you said earlier that you don't have any direct involvement? Your company does the changes in conjunction with Mr. Iacono.
You also said that I run cover. You also said that I run cover, which I clearly don't.
Did. If you go back to the council meetings over the last several months, whenever I brought up this matter about Mr. Tari, you would say, Mr. Sheldon, this is irrelevant for township matters. This is a personal matter between you and Mr. Natari. I, I recommend that you discuss this privately.
I still think it's irrelevant.
Though it's on the township website, it's an integral part of his, his mystique as a, as an elected official.
Thank you for your.
Mr. Natari, are you a doctor?
Okay. Do we have anybody else? Yes, I see Mitch, if that's your name, just unmute your phone and give me your name and address for the record, please.
Good night. My name is Mitch Bimdas, fifty-three Fairview Place, Belleville, New Jersey. My question is, since I've moved here for over about four years now, I repeatedly messenger office through emails, talked to numerous people, even spoken to city officials, city workers about the condition of the street. And it's been implorable. I know I've gotten many emails back from you saying we're, you know, on the list or eventually we're going to get to it. We're supposed to get to it in October. We had a couple city workers come down in October to measure the street and, you know, so forth. And they said, yeah, we should be starting to mill the street within the next couple of weeks. Nothing ever happened. Really want to know what's going on. And also I know with the, the whole city water issue, I know a lot of it, a lot of the piping needs to get replaced. Can we get the piping replaced while we're getting the street redone? I mean, these are big things and this, and this water bill is really, really killing us. Between that and the taxes, I mean, I know the city is trying to do a bang up job of taking care of it. But you know, it's, it's the local people that are really getting hurt right now. And a lot of us aren't working or if we are working, we're not working to the full capacity that we're at one time. So I mean, we really do need some kind of answers on this. There are numerous residents that live here that are handicapped and do need better streets. I mean, their wheelchairs can barely go down the sidewalks. I mean, I know that's the owner's responsibility. But even the street itself, I mean, there's potholes and half of the street is sunken in. You know, it's really, really inconducive to people driving. And also another thing is if we can get street parking onto one side of the street because the street is very, very tight, that will be greatly appreciated. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch, for your comments. I, I usually do remember every single email and interaction. I can't, and if I saw your email address, I would probably recognize it. But I will tell you that, that if I did reply to you and if I told you it was on the list, I'm not somebody that, that says it's on the list if it's not. The town manager and the town attorney can, can tell you before I respond to anybody saying something is on the list, I always verify it. So if I did, I, I don't, for some reason I don't recall our, our interactions. But if I did email you and said it's on the list, sometimes it's two thousand and nineteen money to be spent in twenty twenty or twenty twenty money to be spent in twenty twenty-one. Three years here, I'm still trying to figure out that process. But if you are indeed on the list, if you want to send me an email tomorrow, I'll verify with the, the town attorney and, and the, and the manager tomorrow. Then it's going to get done. It's just a matter of time. I, I can, I can give you the exact status of where we are bidding and all that stuff. That being said, with regard to the, the water, the lead in the lines, I've talked about this extensively. First and foremost, you probably know by now, the, if, I'm not sure when your house was built, it was built before nineteen forty. The residential, the residential lead service line that you would have is the homeowner's responsibility. It's not the township's responsibility. That being said, we do have a program now where the federal government mandated that we replace about four hundred lines. You might get lucky because taking your advice, the four hundred lines that we're going to replace are going to be in conjunction with our road program. So if, if I did tell you, you were on the list, that means you are. And if you are on a list, you would be highly likely that when we do rip up that street, you would be included in those form. I'm not promising your particular house that you're going to get it. But that is the concept. The concept is that when we rip up streets in our road improvement program is when we're going to do those four hundred lines. That's strictly because the federal government mandated we replace four hundred. I paid for my, for my house, my office, which is like a two-family house. I paid seven, eight thousand dollars many, many years ago to do my lead service line. And many other people have. You might luck out whereby if you are indeed on that list for, for Fairway and we'll check tomorrow. It may very well be one of the houses that we do where the federal government mandated to do that. And then you mentioned the handicap, the aprons, the curb cuts, all that stuff will all be done. And it'll be a great, I know Fairway is a big street. I've walked it many times. So if it is.
Fairview, Fairview Place.
Fairview, I apologize.
Fairview.
Absolutely that. Absolutely. So now I know exactly. Fairview is definitely.
My house is directly behind the golf course. And that's also another big issue. The golf course behind us, I know they're doing a lot of work, but the trees behind us, the branches are really starting to come over. I don't know what the correlation is with the city and, and the county on the golf course itself. But the trees are like overhanging and they're becoming dangerous.
Question for you exactly. I apologize. I misheard you. I thought you said fair, fair way. You are getting a letter from me probably tomorrow or the next day, giving you updates. But yes, that street is absolutely on the list. We have communicated with a bunch of people there. So the street's going to be done. The privacy fence, I know a lot of residents on that street were very upset about the privacy fence. I did intervene, had a Zoom meeting with the county. There is no privacy fence coming. We won that battle for you guys. No privacy fence. Anything that hangs over from the golf course would be either the homeowner's responsibility or maybe if it's on the street side of it, we can let DPW look at it. But if it is hanging over on your property, you have the right to cut the hangover part. If it's hanging over on the street side, which is the township property, we could probably address that for you. So that's that.
Okay. My question also is they're doing a lot of work back there. They're, they're cutting trees. So if they're already cutting trees, you know, is, is there any way the city could just contact them to dump, just do a little trimming because my concern is there, there's trees that are hanging and they're already broken off of there. And they're liable to fall off if we get a good gust of wind.
I, I know our DPW director is here somewhere on my Zoom, so he'll make a note, I'm sure, and just let somebody at least go look at it and then give maybe the manager an opinion. It'd be a lot easier. We've been really bothering the county a lot with, with this project. And if we could stay out of the way a little bit, I'd like to, I'll have an update for you. I'm, I'm sure the DPW director will provide the manager with one tomorrow.
I'll check tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
All right. We're still on. We were on video, then we went to telephone. So if you're on telephone and you want to speak, just unmute your telephone and give your name and address. Going to give it just a second. Okay. So at this point, then I'm going to entertain a motion to close public commenting. Vinnie, somebody?
I'm moved.
Second.
All right. There we go. We have a motion made in second. Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So that concludes our public portion, public commenting portion of the meeting.
You need a motion for the consent agenda?
Yep. I'm looking at the consent agenda. I know we're going to want to probably pull resolution number ten.
And in fourteen, right?
I, I said ten, you said what Steve?
Ten and fourteen.
And, and fourteen. Yes. Ten and fourteen. Hearing nothing else, I'm going to entertain a motion to move the consent agenda as a whole.
Make a motion to move the consent agenda as a whole, except for those two.
Second.
We have a motion made in second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli. DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natari.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Schumalo Burke. Schumalo Burke. Mayor Melham.
Yes. All right. Yes. Okay. Here's the yes. Thank you, Marie.
You need a motion to move resolution number ten?
Resolution number ten. We have a motion. We have a second and we'll discuss if we want to.
Vinny, you there?
Yeah.
Vinnie went quiet on us all of a sudden. We have a we have a motion made for number ten discussion.
And why, why don't you explain to people what, you know, what we've really been able to accomplish here? It's taken us a while.
Yeah, it took a good two years to accomplish this, but we to the leadership of our, our great, I'm going to call her the Chairwoman of the Green Committee, Gabby Bennett. We were able to get certification from the state as a bronze level for sustainable New Jersey. So it's, it was about a hundred and fifty, I believe, different points you had to get from various energy saving tasks, various outdoor green projects, a whole, a whole list of stuff that we were able to accomplish over, over the last two years. So we finally got the official notice on that. They usually do an award ceremony. This year they couldn't do it because of, obviously because of COVID. But we are going to do some kind of virtual ceremony or something with the state. So yeah, so this was a really big accomplishment. I think only like 10% of the state actually gets this far. And then we're actually on the way to go for silver, which will be maybe in another year or two, hopefully.
Thank you.
By the way, we started this back in two thousand and eleven, but we've made tremendous strides.
Right.
Gabby in the last two years. So everybody gets.
That's, that's exactly, that's exactly what.
You know, participate, but it's under her leadership. So.
Most definitely.
I often refer to Gabby as the green czar.
Yes.
Greens are, as Councilman Rovell mentioned, the town participated in this. However, Councilman Cazarelli said it took two years, but what you don't understand is that that's two years moving at lightning fast speed. Most towns don't accomplish what we've accomplished in two years. And there's a lot of things. There's the mayor's fitness challenges in that, the, the days that we walk to work. The shred days are in that compost that's coming. Part of that community gardens in there. It's a lot of things going on. All kinds of good stuff. Anybody else want to interject on resolution number ten before we call the vote? All righty. We are good. So clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natari.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Schumalo Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Resolution number fourteen.
Yeah, I'd like to move resolution number fourteen and also acknowledge the passing of Eleanor. Ellie was a sweetheart. She was a, a great contributor to this community and she will be sorely missed, man. It's a devastating loss and my heart goes out to the Schumalo and Corbo families. God bless her and pray for them.
Yeah, that's for sure, Steve.
Yes, I like to, I like to say a little thing about Eleanor too. Eleanor, what can we say? For those who don't know, Eleanor, Ellie, better known as, she's my cousin. You knew Ellie, she would, her, her smile would light up a room and her heart was as big as the moon. Eleanor was a shining light in so many people's lives in Belleville and all over. She will be missed terribly. We love you, Eleanor. So I just wanted to share that.
I'm probably one of the few people here that, that didn't know her. But I know of her and, you know, her reputation speaks volumes and I know she meant a lot to a lot of people. Obviously I know the family, the family's very involved, specifically very involved in this township. And the township certainly did suffer a loss with, with her passing.
Yeah, Mayor, I think you said it perfectly. You know her, but you, her, her reputation precedes her. I think between all over Facebook and just, it was everywhere, people everywhere were just so saddened by her passing. You could tell she had a, a big impact on this community.
Not for sure.
Yeah. And Mayor, Mayor, I'd like to give my condolences to the Schumalo family, to you, Marie. I know you were cousins and Tom, I didn't know you, I didn't know you were cousins. Yeah, Marie, I'm very sorry. I didn't know you were cousins, Tom, but I also give you my condolences too.
Thank you. She, she actually, she actually is a Graziano when she married Vinnie. So.
Oh, wow. Okay.
That will history. Okay. So we pulled that off. I'm just going to get a motion to move it. Need a motion?
I'm moved.
And second, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natari.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Schumalo Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Okay. Moving along our agenda, next item is going to be new business. Do we have any new business?
I have new business.
Okay.
Okay. Want to read something here. I want to know why there was no vote taken by the council on Three Kings Day and how much was spent on the camels and other stuff. I think it was a great idea, but not in this pandemic. And all the expenses, of course, were paid by the taxpayers. That's it.
That's not, first of all, it's not true. All the expenses were not paid for by the taxpayers. We had.
Well, most of, most of them.
Well, but you can't say all because they weren't. I actually paid.
Most of them, three thousand, three thousand on camels. Okay.
Okay. So you obviously have to answer to your question. So you're complaining about Three Kings Day, but you didn't question the same exact drive-through we did for Christmas. There's just something against Three Kings Day.
I'm not talking about Christmas right now. We're talking about the Three Kings Day. I think it was a very good gesture, but not in this pandemic. Okay. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Now you're done speaking. Now I'm going to speak. So you said not during this.
Before you want.
You said not during the pandemic, but during this pandemic, a few weeks before that, we did the Christmas drive-through. So I'm not quite sure why you're not questioning.
Go to because it was too crowded and half the people never got there.
Oh, okay. And you know this? Okay. So during the pandemic, the Christmas was okay, because you agree with that. But during the pandemic, 50% of our population, which happens to be Hispanic and celebrating Three Kings Day, you don't like that. Okay. We, we, we've always known where you stand, I guess. We have a motion, anything else for new business? I guess not.
I don't know what happened here.
Hey, I just want to let Ruben know I'm really here. This isn't in my glove compartment.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hey, I know you are. I just wanted to make sure, all right?
Yeah, I'm here, man.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Have a good day.
Bye bye.
Everybody. Happy New Year.